Good morning, Pat.
Good morning, Sharon, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Did you get the message that Ron was trying to get in?
I got, I'm in.
And Ron, oh, there you are.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning Christine, how are you?
Good morning.
And I think we have Bobby Ray is coming in, so I think we'll have everyone at that point. Good morning Bobby, um, I have Christine on the lo- on the Zoom and I have, let's see, it's one other person, David Warner, is that, is that everyone?
Uh, yeah, that's everyone from the, uh, from the planning department. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, just want to check.
Yeah, I can hear everyone. Good morning, everyone. I'd just like to thank you all for taking out the time to come and meet with us this morning. As you know, we have, um, some concerns regarding the Pepco battery storage. But before we get started, I'd like everyone to introduce themselves. I'm Fisher Monroe and I am the President of the South Lawn Citizens Association. Where the unit is as, where the storage unit is actually going to be located. The next person I see, David, I see David next, if you can introduce yourself. Can you hea- David, can you hear? Oh, okay. Ron, if you can introduce yourself.
Ron Rice, I'm the President of the Indian Head Highway Area Action Council, uh, we're considering changing our name.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Christine?
Uh, I'm Christine, I'll say, I'm the one coordinating the project to take it to the Planning Board on May 19.
Sharon?
Hi, my name is Sharon Lawrence, I'm the Secretary representing the Livingston Woods Homeowners Association in Oxon Hill and we also live, um, just shortly down the street from where the proposed site is.
Herb?
Yes, good morning, Herb Jones, President of the Italian North Area Civic Association and also member of, uh, Italian Alliance for Better County Transparency, good morning.
Good morning.
And next we have, um, Bobby Ray.
Good morning, yeah, I'm Bobby Ray, I'm the Supervisor for the Special Projects Section in the Countywide, uh, Planning Division. And we're responsible for, uh, coordinating and, uh, reviewing mandatory referral projects. So that's our role and that's Christine's role in the, in this process. David, can you hear us, David Warner?
He can't, and it's not on my end because I don't have anyone muted, so it has to be something on his end.
Oh, let's see, somebody said something in the chat, let's see if that's him.
David, that's, it's David.
I cannot hear anyone.
In with your audio. Audio on. Are you using your computer audio? Let's see, let's see if he can, he can get in. Oh, he came back in.
Oh, is he back in?
He, he, yeah, he logged out and he's logging back in. Can you hear us now, David?
I'm better, thank you.
Thank you. I just, uh, to go ahead and I just want to thank you guys for, for inviting us to come in and, and talk about the, um, uh, the mandatory referral review process. Um, yeah, David is going to, uh, explain what mandatory referral is. Uh, and, uh, how it's applicable to this particular project. And just to give you a status of where we are, uh, with this project, uh, as, as you know Christine is the Project Manager. Uh, so she assembles all of the different reviews that we get within the, uh, within the Department from Transportation, from Environmental, Urban Design, et cetera. And, uh, so she'll compile all that information, put together a staff report, and then there will be a series of recommendations that, that come from that report. Since the item is scheduled for the May 19th Planning Board, the report should be completed and published by May 12th, so it's usually one week prior to the meeting. So by May 12th, everyone should be able to, you know, publicly access the staff report and that will have all of our analysis and, um, recommendations in there. So at this point, we haven't completed our review. So we really, you know, the purpose of this meeting, as we understood it, was really kind of talking about the process, kind of talking about what, you know, what we do review as part of mandatory referral. And then we'd be able to talk about more, more project specifics once the staff report has been, has been publicly, uh, issued. So anyways, with that, I'll just go ahead and, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Bobby, can I ask you one quick question? Normally when there's a hearing, there's a sign posted at the location that the hearing is going to take place. There's not a hearing sign at that address. Should there be one?
No, the mandatory referral, um, guidelines don't require, uh, site posting. We do, um, we do mail notification to abutting and confronting property owners. And we really encourage the project applicants to get out in front of, uh, uh, public notification and, you know, public information, so. And that's, that's part of what we look at when they submit applications is what, what public outreach have you done, who have you talked to? You know, what, what concerns or issues have come up from, from, uh, citizens in the area?
So, am I allowed to ask you, have you gotten information regarding our concerns?
Um, I would turn to ask Christine, I know that Christine has been, and, and Mr. Jones have had conversations, uh, so I'm sure that, uh, she has received, uh, his concerns, um, but I would, I don't want to speak for her, I'll have to, to ask her directly.
That's fine. I'll be quiet and let you do what you do.
Oh no, that's fine. So, um, so anyway, uh, as I said, David is going to, is going to take us a few minutes and kind of, you know, talk about mandatory referral. And it is different than, um, you know, than what we, what you're probably used to with development review projects and, and the public notification, the signposting is one of those things. Other thing is that, uh, and probably the most important, is our review is advisory. Uh, the Planning Board's review and recommendations are advisory. So we kind of issue these as recommendations, not as conditions of approval, but recommendations for the applicants to take into consideration to address, you know, any issues that come up during the, uh, during the review and during the, uh, the Planning Board's, uh, hearing, so. With that, David, did you want to say anything?
Well, sure, um, I don't know that I have received, maybe you sent me, um, the information, but first of all, on this call, I see, uh, Patricia Monroe, Sharon Lawrence, Herbert Jones and Ron. Um, and you are, um, individuals that, uh, live near the facility or, um, are representing community association, or can you just give me some background?
Sure, I'm Patricia Monroe and I am the President of the South Lawn Citizens Association. So that battery storage unit is going in the midst of our community.
Okay, understandable, right. And, um, and, and that's kind of the, your, your, the association's concerns are, are shared kind of by the other people on this call?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that, that, and, and if I can just add, good morning. Each of us on this call represent associations, uh, who represent over four, 500 households, et cetera. I'm Herb Jones with the Italian North Area Civic Association and I'll let Ron and Sharon introduce themselves.
Okay, I'm Ron Rice, I'm the President of the Indian Head Highway Area Action Council. We, uh, work with all the associations and civic, civic associations, uh, along, uh, Route 210 and, uh, out to, to Clinton and, uh, south to the Charles County line.
Got it, okay.
Okay, and I am Sharon Lawrence, I'm the Secretary representing the Livingston Woods Associate Board, Board of Directors Homeowners Association and we live less than a mile from the, um, proposed, uh, Pepco Battery Site.
Got it. Right, I looked at the map and I saw, oh, okay, there's residential, uh, development all around it, right? Yeah, okay. And, um, you don't have to characterize it in specific detail, but I'm guessing, um, it's not necessarily the size of the building or maybe its ugliness or something, but more the, the concern is the technology, it, it's going to be doing this battery storage type of activity, that's more the concern.
The safety and the health risk.
Yeah, right.
Safety and health risk.
Right, right. And, um, yeah, all legitimate for sure. Concerns, I know, you know, my, a lot of different facilities, whether it's cell phone towers or anything with electrical transmission going through it, is everybody, you know, wondering what the impacts of that are. Okay.
I, 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 one of the things is the fact that it's lithium batteries, to be upfront. It's lithium batteries, so it's not like it's, um, you know, a solar panel or something along that line, and as you know, lithium batteries right now do not have a good,
They explode, right?
Explode.
Okay, yeah, so it's not just the transmission of the, of the electricity maybe having health effects, but the danger of the facility.
And, and, and Mr. Warner, if I, if I could just add to that, so, one thing we want to make clear, we support Pepco's effort at doing this research to come up with more efficient ways to produce electricity, et cetera, et cetera. We accept that, but because this is a new, uh, this is a new technology, there have been some glitches, as in anything new. There, there, there's a big report in, in, in Arizona, Public Service, uh, Commissions, utility fire, killed some people, the whole nine yards. Of course, there's legit, what I consider to be legitimate concerns in terms of its location.
Right. Okay, absolutely.
Right, so we support them investigating, looking at battery storage as an alternative, have that. I'll issue the proximity to residential community, to daycare centers, et cetera. One, if I may, two, we've, we, we, we're a part of, um, a working group that Pepco developed. And it's a little concerning to us that at this point, there has been no real communication to, with the fire and safety folks. They say they're going to be doing a plan, but there's no plan currently now. And this battery storage, uh, facility is expected to come online by September. So it's almost as if they're putting the carpet for the horse.
Yeah.
And not taking into consideration, um, uh, the safety. Now, I think, if I may, uh, uh, Bobby Ray sent me, and I sent it out and I appreciated, uh, Mr. Ray, the, 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 uh, the rules, which you all follow, mandatory, um, review, advisory in nature. But let me ask this question, and I don't mean to go off script and I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
Does your advisory, is your advisory opinion giving what I consider great weight? Is, is your advisory opinion giving great weight by the county exec? Uh, the other officials, what kind of weight? I know it's advisory, but it's advisory and it comes to you for a reason.
Right. Well, I'll, I'll answer that, I'll explain kind of why the process is the way it is. And then I'll, I'll, I'll address that, that question too. Because at the end of the day, that's kind of what, you know, matters, right? Um, so, uh, you know, we're, we're the, the Maryland National Park and Planning Commission, of course. And we, um, our jurisdiction is most of Montgomery and, and Prince George's County. And in Prince George's County, we have a Planning Board, half of the commission is the Planning Board for Prince George's County. And we have, you know, authority over, um, most of the, uh, of the county, um, for different development projects. So when a private developer comes along and wants to build a shopping mall or a house or whatever, um, they have to get, uh, development approval from us before they can proceed. You know, unless they were putting a porch on the back of their house or something. Although even that sometimes has to come through, but, but, um, we're kind of the process you go through before you go to the county to get your building permit. So you've got to get our subdivision approval, you've got to get our site plan approval and that kind of stuff. If you can get all that, then you can go get a building permit and actually build your house, your shopping center, whatever. Now that's for a private development. The Constitution of the United States, it really goes back to that, um, says, oh, oh, okay, you're, um, a government agency of the state and, uh, you have authority, uh, to look at projects in the state, but you don't have any authority to look at what the federal government does. So when, uh, the US Postal Service wants to build a facility in Prince George's County, um, we can't, uh, make them come to us for the approve, we can't, we can't require them to get approval from us before they build their facility, they're the federal government, we don't have jurisdiction. When the state wants to do something, it's the same way. We're a state agency, but they, um, have not agreed to be regulated by us. So when the Department of Transportation wants to come in and expand a road, one of their roads, um, within property they own, they go ahead and can do that. And, uh, so, and same thing for the county, um, any, any governmental agency. So, uh, that would include public utilities, um, because they're public agencies as well. So we don't have jurisdiction over these entities. And, um, uh, in addition to that, uh, state law says, private utilities, because they're governed by, uh, the, uh, the Maryland Public Service Commission, also do not need to come to us to get approvals before they build something. But fortunately, at least, and it's not the best, but it is what it is, um, the state did say, before you go ahead and build your facility, we do require you to come to the Planning Commission and tell us what you're going to do and listen to us, because we're going to give you really good advice. And we have different processes, you know, so if Pepco is going to go in and, uh, fix a broken line or something, uh, they'll let us know and we'll be like, okay. If Pepco wants to come in and maybe tear up a street and another street and it's going to cut off traffic for a while, um, they'll have to come to us and maybe we will look at it a little more thoroughly. Um, when they want to come in and do something as significant as this, we have the ability to say, not only do you have to come in to see us, you've got to come to a hearing. And, um, we're going to, uh, do a staff report very similar to the kind of staff report we would do for a private development. We're going to analyze the project, look at, um, you know, all of the site plan, uh, issues that we would look at if this was a shopping mall. We would look at, uh, you know, how the transportation's going to be impacted, um, we're going to look at a lot of issues. Uh, so that's where we are with this particular case. Pepco wants to add on to their facility there. And, uh, they are required to come to us to at least get a review. And, um, uh, the benefits, uh, of that are, uh, kind of twofold. One, um, the Pepco will hear from the experts at our office, of which we have people who are, have experts in historic preservation, they have expert, we have experts in traffic, we have experts in all sorts of areas of development. And they will get the benefit of our expertise. And a lot of times, we will point out things that they've never thought of. And they will make changes based on our recommendations. Because we, had, they have to come to a hearing, and Bobby, this one is going for a hearing, right? Yeah, on the 19th. Because they have to have a hearing, uh, residents like yourselves are entitled to come to that hearing and express all of your concerns. So rather than just moving ahead with their project and never reaching out to anyone, we require that we have a public hearing where this application is presented to the public and they have to hear from all of the residents that have comments, right? So, um, that is the, uh, benefit that the state has granted us, because of, uh, um, you know, I got, I got, I considered a benefit, I guess, because they could just tell us, you don't get to look at anything. But they do say that, that federal, state, county, public and private utility projects have to come to us. So that's what we will be doing on the 19th. Now, a couple things about that. When, if this was a private project that was being built for lithium battery storage, when, when we would evaluate a project like that, we would look at the site plan and make sure that the building's going where the building and there's enough car, room for cars to get around. Um, there are, uh, all sorts of issues anytime you physically develop property, you know, where are they coming in off the street? And we would look at that, that would be all kind of the site plan analysis. And then when we would look at it under our subdivision codes, we would actually be able to look at, oh, you're going to send 15 cars on this road, you need to fix that intersection. Um, oh, you know, you're now taking away a bunch of green space, you need to make up for that some way. Or you're tearing down trees, you're going to have to plant trees over here. We would look at a lot of impacts from development. We would even look, uh, so we would do all of that. But what we don't do as, um, a planning commission is we don't have on our staff, um, a bunch of people who are experts in fire, uh, who are experts in, uh, we don't have any doctors, um, we don't have any medical professionals, right? So what we do with an application is we send out to the fire department a, a request to let us know, are there any, uh, issues, um, with the fire department being able to access this site? And that has to be addressed in a private development. Um, Bobby, I don't know if this particular application was sent to the fire department for their comment. But that would be an aspect of review that we do with a private development. We also send, uh, applications out to the Department of Health when it's a subdivision application, for them to advise us on certain health issues. However, in the subdivision and site plan laws that govern us, there is nothing in there that says we can deny somebody, uh, the right to build, for instance, a 7-Eleven. Even if the 7-Eleven, no offense to 7-Eleven, but a lot of people would say, is selling hot dogs that are bad for your health. We don't have the ability to tell someone they can't build the gas station, even though there are concerns with the fumes from gas stations that impact residential. Now, there's some zoning laws that, that impact where you can put the pumps and that kind of a thing. But we don't, we don't have the right to, to determine if, uh, because, um, there's potential soil contamination, um, when you dig it up, is that going to impact the residents? In other words, we don't really have the ability to stop even a private development because of its unhealthy effects. That is governed by other state agencies, you know, we have environmental protection, we have other issues like that that impact the health effects of a development. So like for this particular project, we would not analyze, even if it was private, whether the, um, electricity being generated is having, um, negative health effects on a neighbor, we just wouldn't, that doesn't, that's not, we're more, is the building okay? Is everything involved with the, running the building, uh, going to be safe? But we don't, we, we don't have the jurisdiction to say, hey, that's an unhealthy business, um, and so you can't build it. That's other people look at that. So I think with that particular issue. Now, if, if someone's building a nuclear waste facility, of course, that's really, really huge and that's governed by a lot of federal and state laws, but, but we would look to the fire department to assure us that a particular project, um, doesn't create a fire risk, right? Um, or that, not necessarily that it creates a fire risk, but the fire department would tell us, yes, if that property has a fire, we can, uh, access it safely and put out the fire. But we wouldn't look, for instance, at, um, whether a project, um, you know, uh, we, we wouldn't necessarily be, um, have the expertise to determine whether, uh, lithium batteries explode. That would be something the Public Service Commission would not be allowing if that were the case. So, um, that would fall outside our jurisdiction, so, um,
Recording in progress, this meeting is being recorded.
So, um, to, to summarize with that background, we're at the mandatory referral process, so kind of like I said at the beginning, because this is not a private development, we are granted the authority to provide our recommendations. And the applicant at the end of the day is, uh, has the decision, uh, on their own, whether to listen to our recommendations, whether to listen to your comments as members of the public and take those into account and make changes. But in this particular case, we don't have the authority to require, uh, these changes that you or even our staff might recommend. But it does provide a, a platform. And then, as Mr. Jones was asking, well, okay, great, it's recommendations, but like what, what, um, really, uh, what is the practical effect of that? Well, it just depends on a lot of different factors. One, the applicant may be very receptive to hearing, uh, the comments from us and the public and make changes. You mentioned the county executive. Certainly if there's a public hearing and issues are brought up, the county executive may well take an interest in the project, uh, the county council might. I mean, that's really why it's, why there is a public hearing. It's to bring attention and have a venue, a formal venue where people can bring attention to issues. Uh, but, uh, it's always with that caveat that we don't have, in this case, the ability to mandate, uh, what we want to see changed. We just have the authority to recommend, so that's what we'll be doing on the 19th.
Well, th- well, thank you for that, Mr. Warner, that was, that, that really, that, that, that was very ed- helpful to us in, in ed- in education wise. I just have a couple other questions then, I'm sure, Ms. Monroe and Ron. So in this, because this is a, a project of first impression, we haven't seen anyone like, anything like this in the county, there will be more projects like this. This was mandated by the state through the Public Service Commission as, as a pilot program to experiment with that, so it's new. And when you have anything new like this, you may have to tweak your rule and regulations to make sure the public interest and the public safety, because it's new, i- is, is kept in the forefront. In this case, based on what you said in terms of your, 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 your opinions, you said you would ask the fire department, uh, is this something that you can handle? Um, my assumption is they're going to send you a written response, that's my assumption. My, and I also would like you to consider, because at this point regarding what the fire department has said, and I've done my own research personally with fire department folks, that I can't really reveal right now. They They are not equipped, at this point today, to handle a battery, a lithium battery storage fire, right now. And that's okay. Maybe they will be in two or three weeks, but what I would ask you to consider is when you ask them for this advisory review, be a little more, um, dig a little deeper. What's the timeline? When would your folks be trained? Is there a manual? Because like the Titanic, and I've used this before, and I think you all can appreciate this. When they first sailed on the Titanic, the thought was, they had a certain number of light bulbs that were required. They said, we don't need the light bulbs, we're unsinkable. And Pepco was telling us, you know what, we don't anticipate any problems. Well, I hope you're right, but if there is a problem, what is the plan of action? And if our fire department's not ready, we're all gonna be sitting here with A on our face. Again, we support the technology, but we wanna make sure it's safe. We don't want it in this community, but you know, we may not win that battle. But the safety issue, the few people that you're gonna be asked turning to, like the Department of Environment, Ms. Croons, and all of those individuals, need to make sure and assure that this project of first impression that we know for a fact has had, not this project, but battery storage units, utilities have had issues. I just sent your staff an article from the Arizona Public Service Commission. Major issues, that's a fact, that's not a myth. Those are facts. And we don't wanna be after the fact. We're gonna have a plan now, but four or five houses burned, somebody died because of the emissions. We're not trying to do that, okay? So we would ask, and I appreciate what you said, that when you do these, these um, I call them advisory opinions from the um, fire department, et cetera, it just can't be a glossy answer. And I'm not suggesting that's gonna be the case for, from them. I'm not suggesting that, but I think because this is a project of first impression, I'm asking you all to dig a little deeper. Is there a manual? When would you have the manual? Is there ongoing training? What fire departments are up and ready now in November if there's an outbreak? Are they ready or are we getting ready? That's important to the community. That's important to the public health. That's important to the public interest.
Also, what about an evacuation plan?
And again, these are all things that I know you outlined, Mr. Warren, and what, what, what I, what I, I'm thinking, and I don't know if it's appropriate, because we're gonna be, it's, it's kinda odd, we're gonna be going before your folks in um, in, in, um, in May. But if we were to put together some recommendations now for your consideration to ask the applicant at the hearing, I mean, what I consider to be reasonable recommendations, you know, such as, uh, when will the manual be set for the fire department? Where will the actual training? Who's gonna do the training? How often will you do the training? Will the manual be at each of the fire stations? Both the volunteers and the regular? That's important. I think that's a reasonable accommodation. Okay? Uh, secondly, if there is an outbreak, because these battery storage units are, are, are subcontracted out. Pepco's made it very clear. Subcontracted, some contracted out to someone else. Uh, you know, one of their vendors, and, and that's fine. But what would be the protocol if there is a mishap? I wanna get that protocol in writing now and not when it happens. I think that's a reasonable accommodation for a project of first impression that has a history, not Pepco's battery stores, but battery storage uh, facilities in general have a history of problems. That's a fact. And so those are the two recommendations. I think I missed uh, one other, if, if one of my colleagues can help me.
Hmm, hold on.
So, so we, so we have the uh, the um, we have the fire department making sure their folks are trained, which is probably the biggest. That is, for us, to, to, to your team, that is critical.
Insurance, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Was there something about insurance or something?
Oh, well, um.
No.
Ron had, no, no, you're right. Ron had articulated better than I could. Uh, we talked about several things. Um, uh, Pepco has assured us that um, there'll be no issues. And I appreciate them, and, and we do, we're, we're not against Pepco, and that's very important. That's why this is a little different. Did this, you know, the technology makes sense too. Because it's a pilot, it's not full scale, it's a pilot program. And that's something that I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Warren, is something uh, that, that is new to, 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 to your organization, this whole battery storage.
Sounds like it.
That's relatively new, right? So um, you know, with new technology, you have glitches until, and that's why it's a pilot, till you get the, you work it out and work it through. But on the front end, the public safety sometimes is missed, and that's where I am. We've got this new technology, everybody's excited, but nobody's talking about, and I, I see your rules. You talk about the land, the trees, et cetera, and that's fine, but there's nothing in there about the environment impact, the public, the air quality, and that's not your baby. That may be Ms. Croon's baby, because she's the director of the, the Department of the Environment, maybe. I don't know if you're gonna ask her for a referral, what her thoughts are about this. But those are the issues that we're thinking about as people who live in the community.
Yeah.
We love the trees, we love the roads, but what about the impact to humans? And that's not in your rules. Not your fault, but it's just not in your rules. So our query would be, well, who covers that? Who's gonna put that question out there and look out for the public interest as we go down this road with this new technology?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd like to know if there is a, uh, an incident and people are harmed or property is harmed, who, who insures that? Is it Pepco? Is it their subcontractor? Uh, what's, uh, you know, we, we'll have concerns about the subcontractor is kind of small. If the, they push this down to the subcontractor, is there enough insurance to cover a, uh, an incident?
Right.
So with Ron saying that, we, I researched A.H. Mensah, who's their subcontractor. He's not even, his business is not even worth seven hundred thousand dollars. That won't even buy two houses in his neighborhood.
Yeah. Let me address those issues. So when we would do a normal um, um, application like this, even a private one, uh, the law says we go to the police, they go to the fire department, and they tell us if they can uh, address any, um, if, if they can get to the facility and put out, it, you know, it didn't say put out a fire. It just says, can the fire department access this property within a certain uh, number of minutes? And the fire department either says, yes, we can, or no, we can't. And if they can't, then we can charge them a fee under the, if it's a private development. Um, so that would be all we would be able to ask. We wouldn't be able to say, hey, fire department, do you know how to put out a fire at a carpet factory? Or do you know how to put out a fire at a lithium battery storage? Um, you know, we wouldn't test for that. But, but uh, two things. Um, one, I uh, don't think that um, there would be um, any problem. Um, I would talk to our staff about this. But, but to me, if you had a, a list of concerns outside of can the fire vehicles get there in time? If you have a list of concerns, such as the ones Mr. Jones mentioned, um, that we pass those along to the fire department as well. We can't make them answer us, but we certainly could pass those along to the fire department. Um, but also, those concerns that you have, you're fully entitled, of course, to bring them to the fire department's attention too, right? And then when you come to the public hearing, you got two things. One, that public hearing, you can provide whatever documentation you want uh, related to the project, you know? So you can bring that article from the Arizona Daily Republic, where it came from, uh, detailing a dangerous condition. Um, you know, if you bring, uh, you, you know, and, and we're very flexible, we have a new chair, but normally, we're very flexible about the amount of information that people bring. Um, if you bring your recipe for chocolate chip cookies or something, it starts to be, you know, it starts to get lost in the, in the shuffle, people. So what you really wanna do is provide documentation that is clear, uh, uh, professional. You know, a lot of times we will get a lot of letters, very impassioned letters, um, and justifiably so. But it's hard when they are interspersed with language such as, and you're all corrupt, or you're all gonna die, you know, stuff like that, just, you know? So to the extent you, you keep it professional and factual, it really gains more weight, I think. So you have all of the, the right to bring that documentation. You have the right to go to the fire department and ask them these questions. Um, and then when you appear at the hearing, you have the right to bring up these, these issues too. And we can certainly pass that along uh, to the fire department as well. But all we will uh, be able to look at is, uh, did the fire department say they can get there in time? It's up to them to decide whether they know how to fight a lithium battery. Now, um, we, we would, we would hope, we would hope, of course, that the state legislature, the General Assembly and the Public Service Commission uh, did not uh, think through all of their professional expertise that they have that would not recommend a project such as this if there was such a danger. But you know, government's never perfect either, so I could see your concerns. You know, sure, we hope that they would not recommend something that would be dangerous. But at least we know that some thought went into it. It's not just Pepco coming up with it on their own. This is the state telling them to do it. Um, so that's kind of on that issue, uh, when it comes to all of the questions. Even the evacuation plan would be something that the fire department might have a comment on. Um, then uh, the issue with insurance, I think, would really be outside of any of this consideration. Absolutely legitimate. Uh, uh, you know, I represented um, a community in Northern California many years ago where um, a pipeline exploded and killed a number of people. And the litigation went on for years, and it's so complex. You know, did the utility company have enough insurance? Uh, oh, they did that a certain amount, but they're gonna, willing to settle. I mean, it becomes so complex, it's completely separate from this. But um, but Pepco, yeah, no doubt has insurance, but you know, whatever level of insurance that might be, they're either self-insured, um, or you know, um, they uh, use outside agencies as supplemental insurers. Normally, they're going to protect their shareholders by having enough insurance to deal with catastrophes. So you would hope that they would. And uh, any contract they enter into with a subcontractor, would, they would be fools not to require that subcontractor to have insurance. I mean, when the government enters into a contract with somebody, and I did this a lot as a city attorney, I made sure whoever we were contracting with had insurance and indemnified us if they screwed something up. So Pepco, as good lawyers, I'm sure, is not gonna let the subcontractor just be some willy-nilly person with no insurance. But I have no idea, of course, but you know, you would expect that to be. Otherwise, their shareholders would go crazy. Um, and then, you know, your own homeowner's insurance, of course, plays a role in anything too that happens to a home and health and everything in the, but you know, you don't even wanna uh, imagine damage of that level or a personal injury, of course. But, but all those insurance questions are important, but they're not part of our review. We're very much responsible for the physical development of the property, uh, and that's what we'll mostly be looking at, at the, at the hearing.
David, can I ask you another quick question? And this might not be in you all's privy, but does the contractor have to be licensed in Maryland?
Well, I'm not an expert in that, but in, in every state that uh, I've worked in besides Maryland, I didn't, I served as a, a city attorney in California, Nevada, Wisconsin, Illinois. So I have a lot of experience in different states and I advise on all sorts of issues. I have not had to look at licensing requirements for, if, I don't know if it's a construction contractor or the person who's actually putting the batteries in. But uh, in all of the states where I've worked previously, you have to be licensed to do business in the state, to do business in the state. I would think that would apply to the subcontractor, and you can always check if an.
We did.
Yeah, is entitled to do business. Well, that's very interesting. So that's an issue for you to bring up with Pepco.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let, let me go to, go into you all's rules. Herb Jones here again. Section three, pre-submission coordination. I just had a quick question. Uh, pre-submission coordination, section three, uh, number two. The staff will advise the applicant to seek community input before formally submitting a project for mandatory referral. This may include requesting the applicant to send appropriate, adequate, and timely public notice to adjacent, adjoining property owners. How do you monitor that? And what's considered appropriate and timely?
Bobby, I'll let you take that one.
Okay, yeah, as I said, one of the, the things we do when we first meet with applicants uh, is we ask them about their public outreach. Uh, you know, what they've done to date, what they plan on doing. Um, you know, if they plan on providing mail notification, are they having public, uh, public outreach meetings, that sort of thing? Uh, these are all things that we, we ask them to put together in writing to us as part of the application. Uh, again, we can't, you know, mandate that they do this, but we do highly recommend it, because it, you know, it's to their advantage when they get to the planning board. Um, so, and I think, and, and again, Christine can, can pipe in if she wants to, but um, Pepco, as I understand it, based upon the information that I have, that did quite a lot of, of outreach, um, uh, well, I could be wrong, but the, 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 the information that I saw did look like they had provided, you know, quite a few opportunities. Uh, you guys can, can tell me if that's, that's the case or not, but um.
Bobby, I can respond as well. Uh, part of the, the uniform standards is very clear requirement that any application that before we accept, all the information must be complete. I wanted, oh, am I immediate? Okay, one of them is the engagement. They have to provide us an engagement plan of when they're gonna execute that and when that it will be in effect and who is notified before we accept the application. We started with Pepco in January. We did not accept this project until April. Why? Because we were working through things that had not been completed in the package for us to accept it. The review time is only sixty days after we accept it. So that's why we do not accept a package that is not complete. If you look at the uniform standard, it said the package must be complete before we accept it. So all the requirements in the uniform standards, as David has explained, may be advisory, but we do look at all the possible impact on every land use, including this project. And so if they, they did not submit site plans, I waited until they make sure they send me one. If they not submit lighting, I waited until they submit a lighting plan. If they not submit a landscape plan, I would, I did not accept it. So we started in January. We're here now entering to May. And so staff had to hold them responsible to make sure, yes, you say you're gonna get this, but I don't have it. So we cannot accept it. We've had three meetings with Pepco, just to make sure we addressed what they've given to us because they were doing a piecemeal submission. And we told them, no, for me as a project manager, I don't want piecemeal. Because I don't want them come at the end and say, well, I gave you this on this day and I gave you on this day. So I finally stopped and I said, no, I don't want piecemeal submission. When you get it together, please let me know when you have it together. And I need a hard copy of the complete set before you send electronic. So when I manage project, I don't take piecemeal. That's number one, because they're confusing. And then number two, when you send a complete set electronically, I need a hard copy first to review it to make sure everything on the uniform standards is in the hard copy. Then I will authorize to send me the electronic before I can send it to staff. So that's what we've gone through back and forth on this project to make sure we had everything in hand. And our staff, every staff person, but uh, which uh, David mentioned, our transportation, his preservation, community planning, environmental, and public facilities, each one of the staff has to look at what Pepco has sent of only applicant to say, yes, I have everything my section needs to write my memo. If any staff says, no, I don't have anything and I need additional information, we will not accept it. So our standard of acceptance, it really makes sure a comprehensive package is complete. Because why, as I said before, sixty days is very short when you're writing a staff report and going back and forth and you don't have information. So beginning in January to accept it, finally now to go in May, it tells you what internally we've been dealing with, to ask them to make sure they gave us. They gave us an engagement plan, and the question I had was, when do you implement the engagement plan? They gave me an outline to the meetings I've had and what they're going to have. And I said, well, make sure these meetings are completed and update me on the engagement plan as you execute it. So until, two weeks ago, I asked them to send me an updated version of the engagement. So until, two weeks ago, I asked them to send me an updated version of the engagement plan of the meetings that have taken place and the information that has been shared and to make sure the information that they have shared with the community is the same information they have shared with us. When we did our mailing notice, we copied their information. We made sure we told them, this is our notice. Make sure your notice as well as corresponding to the information to make sure the community can reach you to ask questions on information on your project. We respond to community inquiries on the process to the planning board. They're supposed to respond to the scope of the project and how it impacts the community. So they sent me an updated community engagement two weeks ago that I started writing a staff report. And I said, okay, so this is up to date? They said, yes. On Tuesday, I got a call telling me, oh, no, they have another meeting this Saturday. They're gonna send me another update, new the engagement. They have an open house meeting with you guys Saturday to talk about they've retained a building and they've invited people and this is a final update of their community engagement before the hearing. And I says, fine, after that, send me a summary, exactly what happened at that meeting. So we'll be able to look at it and put in the staff report. So that's what we have worked through with them to make sure every component in the uniform standards is submitted, especially the engagement plan. The engagement plan is actively moving and I make sure I stay to it because it is one thing that the board always hinges on. Was the community brief? Does the community have the same information staff review? And when was the last meeting was held before the hearing? So they told me they have a meeting on Saturday. So in terms of engagement, that's what we did from January through now.
Okay, so let me explain to this. This is the largest mailing that they did to the community is the one on Saturday. Prior to that, they did one in December. And that's only because we had to beg them to notify the community about the project. Prior to that, the meetings were just small meetings with maybe, would you say no more than twenty people on? And then maybe one with forty? But as far as engaging the actual community of where they were placing that, that first meeting did not take place until, I raised cane, until December. That was the first actual mailing that they did to the residents within the area. The, the meeting that's coming up now, they sent out three thousand, supposedly three thousand letters to the neighbors. Now, three thousand still not gonna reach everybody that's impacted because in my development alone, you have seven, oh, what, seven, eight hundred houses, period. So I'm just saying, that initial engagement wasn't the way that they probably wrote it up, but I'll hear it and I'll see it.
Christine, Christine, let me ask you this question. Now, again, I'm looking at section three, two, uh, two. This may include requesting the applicant to send out appropriate, adequate and timely public notice to adjacent adjoining property owners. My question to you is, if the applicant doesn't do that as outlined, timely public notice initially when the project is coming on. So people have enough time to do the research and get ready for you all's hearing. What is the, the, what is the standard of acceptance with respect to two? And you talk about adequate and timely public notice to adjacent adjoining property owners. What is the timeline on that in terms of when the applicant should get that information out prior to, to, to what you all do in terms of getting ready for the, uh, for the hearing?
When Pepco initially came to us, I think, I think that was late last year, just consultation about the pilot in which they had just gotten through from public service commission. The first thing on the list was outreach. You need to conduct outreach. You need to develop a plan and you need to outreach. When we went with them in January, they had just told us that they did a major outreach in December. And I said, I need that compilation of those meetings should be ongoing and I need to have those. There is no way at staff level we can test them to see what's adequate and what's timely. As long as they show us that this is what they have done and they say these are the mailings they did. These are the virtual meetings that help. That's enough for us at staff level to say, yes, this is what they said they've done. There's no way we can test them to say they were timely. Um, they were adequate because there's just, the applicant has to be responsible for something because this is about their project. He has to be responsible to make sure they contact adjoining, abiding, as, uh, neighbors to be able to tell them about their project. That is not our role, but we make sure that plan is in place.
But so, so my experience has been, I look at you all, you all are not a regulatory agency. I understand that. But when I look at what you have sent to us, and this is your language that talks about timely public notice to adjac- this is not, not me making up, this is what you all are saying. My point, my question to you is, have they submitted to you all the date and time that they submitted letters to the adjacent property owners? That's my question to you.
I have, I have a chat with all the dates of all the meetings and all the mailing, all the virtual meetings. I have dates.
Okay, okay. Now, when you say all the mailings, are we talking, I'm talking specifically about the mailings to the adjacent adjoining property owners. That's what I'm talking about. So I'm clear.
They sent me all the information. They have a table that has at least fourteen different outlines of their virtual meetings and their mailing.
Okay, can you give us, is it inappropriate, is it inappropriate to ask, do you have a sense of when they did the mailing to the adjacent adjoining property owners?
I didn't, I don't think, that's not, that's not something we go into because they are very clear when we meet with them, who they're supposed to notify. The same document you review is the same document that follow to make sure the adjacent and adjoining and abiding is notified. So we assume that in their notification and in their plan, that's the target mailing they are targeting.
See, this is my point, and, and, and this is not, and I'm just, you know, as a resident, I'm just throwing out this, throwing this out to this agent, to, to this agency who I respect. I've, I've come to respect, I've only been in this county in three years. This is where I think it becomes very important because, and I understand you all rely on the company or the applicant to do that. But if there's no check and balance, you really don't know. You, 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 and I understand you men have the staff for that. So down the road, we have to think about some ways to, how we can verify that. Because you could have many applicants saying, oh, we did it and give you some dates, but there's no way to verify. But I'm looking at your section three that says, this is what's supposed to happen. And my understanding from Ms. Monroe, that the notices to the adjacent and adjoining property owners did not happen. So that's why I'm bringing this up. It's not a criticism. It's just something that we, as a resident, work, which you have to work through because this is important. Because people have the right to know.
Can I break in? We, as an agency, as the planning department, we send notices at the time of acceptance to adjacent abiding and confronting property owners.
Okay, well, that's, that's end of my discussion then. Okay, great. Okay, I didn't, okay, I, I, that, I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, I was trying to address your question by the applicants. I didn't want to address what we did. We did two outreaches. You were focusing on the applicants. We do outreach as well by our mailing. Our focus was not on that because we do notices to adjacent and abiding. But the applicant, what is what Mr. Jones was focusing on, and that's why I explained what the applicant gave to us.
No, no.
We do notification to you, they're joining and about it, to make sure you know about the project. Immediately the project is accepted. So we accepted the project in April. You got noticed a week immediately after we accepted. You got everyone adjacent to abiding got a notice.
Okay, so, 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 that's a good, let me just ask this. That's a good distinction. So if I understand that, Christine, once you all accept the applicant's application, then you, then your agency sends out notices to the adjacent adjoining property owners. Am I clear on that? Is that clear?
There are two types of outreach. There's, the first outreach is planning department outreach. We don't do signposting. We do mailing to abiding, adjacent owners. That, they're, and then the, the second outreach, which is extensive, is the applicant's outreach. So your discussion to me, you were asking about the applicant's outreach and their timeliness. That was the discussion you were focused.
You are absolutely correct.
It's not just the applicant, but it's us sending mailing out as well. So you are getting double notices from us on one project, not just from us, including the applicant.
Okay. Can I say this?
But, but, but let me say this. But I, I just want to make, be clear on this distinction, Christine. This is important. I just want to make sure this is clarity. You're absolutely right. I was asking a question about the applicant's responsibility for sending out notices. You are absolutely right. Now I'm talking about what you all do. And I want to make you understand that, once you have accepted the applicant's application, then you all send out that notice to adjacent adjoining property owners. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we, we have the mailing list. It's adjacent, abiding and confronting, as well as area civic association. Mr. Jones, probably that's how you got a notice about the project. I don't know.
Well, I, I never got a notice, but I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. I never got a notice. But I wouldn't get a notice.
Area civic association.
I didn't get one either. Sharon, did you?
If you're not, if your association is not registered up to date, you're not gonna get one. Because we pulled the data from registered associations. We pulled the data from registered current associations. That's what we had to sample.
Okay, we, we're registered and we didn't get one.
So we pulled the data.
I got, but I got the most important part. I got the hearing, so that's all I needed.
Okay.
Yeah, I got the hearing. But we didn't get the other letter.
So, so the, if I understand you correctly, Christine, an association has to be registered with National Capital Plan to get all notices of projects that impacting their area. Is that correct?
That was a council bill that was passed, I think, in eighty-six, yes. A quiet association to make sure they update their data when the board of directors changes to make sure any development projects can access them to mail information to them. If you're not registered and we pull data on you, you will not be, get that information.
Yeah, that's a distinction.
And I have a mailing list. I have the mailing list of all the addresses that the mail was sent. I have the mailing list for all the civic association that the mailing was sent to because we generated that mailing list when I developed the notice. And the mailing list is central information to be able to put those mailing lists to the addresses to mail them out. We have a copy of the mailing list that was generated and where it was sent.
And, and, and does the county exec, who houses that mailing list of, of all the registered associations, to your knowledge?
Uh, you register with the county, community, uh, there's a community, uh, there's a district in the county.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, actually, Herb, you have to register on each one. Like for District Eight, you have to register with them. And then for MNC, PTC, you have to register for them. So you have multiple registrations.
Yeah, the only reason, the only reason I bring that up. I lived in Virginia for twenty-five years and every state is different. And I understand that in, in, in Virginia, it works a little differently. And I just thought they all worked the same, but obviously not. But I, I will make sure that I get my association registered to each of the different agencies that hold hearings, if I understand what, what was said correctly.
Yeah, so the registration is, um, is something that, um, you know, had to be kind of imposed on the associations because they're literally, I forget the number, but it's, it's, uh, there's a significant number of associations in the county. And you know how associations are. They can have two or three different officers every year. They change. And a lot of associations use like the president's home address. And then the president changes and that's the only address we have. So we have this process, like, keep us up to date where you want it and we'll mail it to you. But there, you know, way for us to track all the different, because there's like a thousand of them or something. You know, there's a really big number. So, so that's why it's, it's, you know, imposed on the associations to keep us up to date. But there's a form to do it online and Helen Smith handles it in our office and she's great. So any questions, you can.
Okay, no, thank, thank you for that. I just wanted to, to be clear and I am clear now. Thank you.
I'll send you the form, Herb.
Thank you. Honestly, this is my last question. Uh, section seven, is the battery storage project considered a solar energy system? Would be considered under solar energy system guidelines under yours rules?
No, it would not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just want to piggyback before we break up. I'll piggyback on what David was saying regarding the, uh, the fire department review. What we asked the fire department to look at, as, as he said, was, um, response time. You know, can, can you respond to an emergency, um, you know, at this location within a given period of time? Uh, and we did have a condition, or we were looking at proposing a condition, excuse me, a recommendation that the applicant do some sort of a pre-incident, um, report with the fire department prior to, to operation of the facility. But I would say, if you, if you could put in writing to me what your specific concerns are, and I think you expressed them, you know, uh, very eloquently. And I think the, the fire department, uh, you know, could certainly respond to these. And I'll, I'll send them over to the appropriate personnel and see if we can get, uh, a response back. If not a written response, at least maybe we can get somebody to participate in the, uh, in the public meeting and, and respond there. So please, please send that to me and I'll, I'll, I'll take care of it on our end.
Well, you guys have been, if we, Patricia, Sharon, Ron, any other queries, questions?
No, I've, I've learned a lot. Thank you very much, Ron.
Yeah, you, you all have been very generous, generous with your time. And if we seem a little tense, let me first of all apologize. This is about where we live, our community, our safety, our quality of life. That's all this is about. There's no reflection on anyone, but, you know, you gotta protect. My grandmother used to always say, you have to protect your home front. And that's what we're doing. Uh, that's what we're attempting to do. We've had extended conversations, I said to Christine, with Pepco. I'm not gonna go into exactly characterize what, what outcomes those have been. But we're constantly in contact with Pepco. They are very aware of our concerns and asking them to consider other locations, uh, which they did initially in this application. Uh, I believe one of the first locations was over at the harbor. And we've gotten some intel that basically said, uh, the folks over the harbor said, absolutely not, don't even consider bringing a battery storage over here. That's just intel. I can't, I can't attest to any one person, but that's the intel. Okay, because that was the initial location. Okay.
But Mr. J, uh, Mr. Jones, what I have engaged, I also live in this county. And believe me, everything I write, I write from that point of view, being in the same neighborhood. The question I have for Pepco, which I've really, really pushed them so hard, is what other locations did they look? They, in their submission to us, they admit that they had a team of engineers who really explored every possibility where they could locate it. The constraints they had was the other location they didn't own them. It would take a process for them to go through to purchase those. And the pilot timing that had been given to them by the public service commission to get this through, to get this moving, is been revised because this has not gone according to the schedule. So for them, the Livingston location since they own was something that they own the property. It is theirs. It's big enough to be able to work within that side to bring the, the battery in that location. And that became their default according to their own study. That's part of the submission they gave to us because we, I asked them, how do you justify being here and not somewhere else? And they'd say they conduct an internal study to come up with options where it needs to be. And this side, because they own it and it's large enough, four point something acres, and they're only using such three hundred square feet area for this, it became the default. At staff level, we have had three meetings. We challenged them to build, to make sure there's enough tree buffer around the entire community because it doesn't, it's not there. Last week, I even called them and I said, I can see your lines, your Pepco lines that run through the community, the, the, the right of way. And they said, yes. And so we're trying to figure out exactly what, how much landscape can be provided? How much fencing can be provided? What buffer can maybe buffer around the side? That to make sure the wood line becomes thick enough and to make sure the fence become thick enough. So there's a level of protection. When you drive in the county, there's a Pepco line of, uh, construct, uh, line of tension lines, but there's also a big buffer that is always allowed. So when I look at this community and I try to find out what came first, was it Pepco or the community? So Pepco told me the community was there first and they came second. I was kind of surprised as a planner. They said, really? You came in there second and there is no buffer? And so I, believe me, at staff level, we've really been engaging and challenging them. You came in, the community was already built. So they, no one required any tree planting. No one required a huge area to really be dedicated to a buffer and trees and fencing to make sure there's a buffer density between the homes and the structure itself. That didn't happen because I found out that myself as a planner, it's like, what came first? And so those are the things we've kind of battled them too. But what they told me was, they will do landscape. They will do fencing, but they won't do it on this process because of their timing schedule to get to the public service commission. So I'm just disclosing this to you as a community and as a staff person who will really, really hammer them on exactly how you protect integrity. on exactly how you protect the integrity of a residential community on something like this, in terms of the tree line, extensive buffer tree line, since you have the line, fencing because you already have the line as well. And so they are pushing back to say, well, we can do it in the next phase. So I'm just disclosing this to you, because it's up to you to see exactly what you can say, hey, you want to do it now and not do it in the next phase. I had to say this to you now to make sure you're aware, because this is something I have gathered into really arguments with them. We need to plant more trees, we need to put a wall of a fence, we need to identify the buffer line between the homes, because why? Your line of power lines does not have the landscape that should have been there if the community was there first.
So let me tell you this, they're telling us in the meetings that they're going to do all this tree line.
And landscaping.
Landscape.
So, you know.
See, see, this is what they're telling us, and they wonder why we don't trust them. This is what they're telling us.
That's exactly right.
Okay, now you just heard me. According to David, his allegiance, you be prepared for the hearing, we're disclosing things to you that you know now, you're prepared for the hearing. This is me at staff level dealing with them every day, and I said, no. You need to do this, you need to do this, and they said, no, we'll do this in phase two, we'll do this, this. So now you're hearing from us, you now come to the hearing and say what you want. Because at staff level, I'm just telling what I have done at staff level, as when I take staff comments and I look at everything we've told them to do, or what their defense is. This is what we're coming from, so I'm just letting you know as a community, that you know what, arm yourself to say what you want and see what the board will say what you want.
Now, let me answer the question.
That's what they're telling us.
Right, this, this is a mandatory referral. Y'all give an advisory, um, an advisory, uh, uh, opinion. That opinion goes to who? Who does that opinion go to within the county government? Who does that, uh, your advisory opinion go to?
Well, they're going to get permit from D-PY for electrical connection and construction, and sediment control from Soil Conservation District. There are three, other three levels of review. And I asked them whether the Public Service Commission will be getting anything, any level of approval, they said, no. So Public Service Commission is out. In cases that we review, that Public Service Commission will get the final say, we transmit the report to them. But because Public Service Commission is no longer in the loop, loop of reviewing the final document, because the pilot has already been approved for them, it's only going to lift it to D-PY, who got the electrical, electrical permit, and it's while the construction permit, Soil Conservation to look at sedimentation and drainage based on the disturbance of the area, and there's stormwater management.
Does, so does this, would this issue ultimately come before the city council? You, with your advisory? I guess I'm trying to understand, when you do your advisory, who are you going to physically send your advisory to? You said the, uh, D-PY and.
The applicant. It goes to the applicant, the applicant takes what was given to them.
It goes to the head, it goes to the head of the public agency.
Yeah.
Not, not just to some low-level staff member, it goes to the head of the public agency. And they're supposed to respond to us, uh, with an answer saying, we will follow your recommendation, or we won't.
Okay, and, and, and again, what is that public agency? Uh, Mr. One, I'm sorry.
Pepco.
This will be.
The public agency is Pepco?
It's the applicant.
Okay, the applicant, okay.
Yeah, it, it is, uh, Pepco is a private corporation, a private public utility, and kind of like I said at the beginning, private public utilities are also covered under mandatory referral, being governed by the Public Service Commission.
Okay.
Not governed, but, but, um, under the jurisdiction of.
I have one last question. You talked, you mentioned stormwater management. So that area now has an issue where it holds water, where they want to put that battery storage. So who's responsible for coming out to look at that before this hearing? And before you all do final approval?
Well, the stormwater management is not, they, they provide a concept, but it's not required for managerial thorough reviews, required for the permit issuing. D-PY will look at it. D-PY will look at their stormwater management, because they're disturbing more than, when they first came to us, the question was raised, how much area of disturbance are you going to be impacting? Because that's when it generates into the stormwater and the sediment control. First, at first, they said, oh, no, we're doing less than five thousand square feet. We said, no, I think you're going to do more than that. They came back the second time and said, well, we're doing more than five thousand, so we're going to do a sediment, uh, uh, control requirement. We said, okay, that got to be filed with D-PY. So it's part of the, uh, permit approval process with D-PY. We don't review the sediment at the stormwater management at all, we don't. Our environmental staff may take a look at their concept, but it's not under adjudication. It's reviewed by D-PY as part of the final permit. And I think there are meetings at D-PY that you guys can contact D-PY director, and ask if you can get engaged in those peer review. I don't know how it works. But I have known some communities that have followed up with D-PY in terms of the permit process, to see exactly what is happening. If you have issues with flooding or water holding, that may be something you want to follow up on, but that's up to you. But we don't look at that, we don't look at the stormwater management. They just tell, we just want to know what is the impact of the area and what it requires. It would trigger stormwater management. And with the second time they told us about the impact, we said, no. You got to file a concept with D-PY.
I'm afraid I'd have to leave at this time.
Yeah, I, I need to go too, I apologize.
Thank you.
Well, thank, well, thank you. Thank all of you. Thank you so much for this opportunity, and, um, um, I guess we'll just, we'll, we'll be moving forward, but thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mission time, thank you.
Take care.
Okay.
Bye bye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
It was, it was good talking to all of you, though.
And you too. Thank you. It's good talking to you, Christine.
Yes, I, I've done my best, believe me, to kick them around. I have done my best. I live and work here. I don't just come to work here. I live and work here. So the issues that are intimate to you, they're intimate to me as well, as a resident in the county. So I'm not just a planner who's from outside. I live and worked here for the last thirty years. I go to ask questions that many of them, most, the many staff may not ask. Who was here first? Was the community first here first? Who was built first? And why, how come you didn't come, you didn't even think about planting trees? How come you didn't want to do a fence? Those are things that, and I think those are things that you guys need to explore. We want a fence, we want a buffer. I mean, there's just no way around it.
And like I said, in their meetings, they're telling us that they're doing this, but they come to you and say something.
I don't have it, I'm sorry. It's not part of the submission to me. I, I had to send an email, I had to send a PowerPoint to them and say, hey, I'm going to present this as, what are you going to do? They said, no, that's, that's phase two. I said, well, your phase two is not elaborate in the, in the information you gave me. So, how can you say it's phase two? But I'm still going to present it. They show a fence, but they don't show the landscape buffer. So, but it's up to you to communicate, arm yourselves with that information. That's why I had to disclose what I had to say. I'm sorry. I don't know what I'd get in trouble with that, but I have to say what my private conversations with them have been.
Thank you.
The fencing, the buffering, who was there first? What, how they came in as a utility company, and they did not think about this thing about the safety of the community. You're serving customers, but you're not thinking about their safety. So I asked Pepco, give research from your real estate division and tell me who was there first. You came, the community was there. As a utility company, what is your obligation to a residential community? So those, for me as a planner, I query, I believe me, I get into, I get into, I can even tell you, and I say, what is your obligation to a residential community of this nature?
They, they had made it clear to us, this is going to be the best landscape battery storage facility in America, okay?
That's okay, sir. I, as I said, I gave you more than I normally would, but I had to, I, I was, I had to make sure you're aware of that.
No, I appreciate that.
They don't have a fence, and they don't have the landscape we asked for at the beginning. They don't. So, um, again, I hope I don't get in trouble with that, so say that. That was my discussion with them, and I wanted to make sure you guys knew that now. The landscape we asked at the beginning is not there. The fence we ask on top of the landscape is not there, because I told them last week, if I see the right of way, your right of way is right behind people's houses. And I'm like, really? I live down on, on Church Road, there's a right of way with townhouses, but it's twenty foot buffer, twenty foot buffer, with a fence. You have a right of way here with tension lines, with no trees, no landscape, no fence.
And, and they don't maintain the park.
Excuse me?
That's right. They don't, don't maintain the property. Never have.
So, again, again, that was a bonus for you. I'm sorry, so. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Have a great afternoon. Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Hey, so, uh, okay, so. Hello?
That was, and that's some, that's why I can't trust, that's why you can't trust.
Yeah.
You know what, Pat? Just keep praying.
Okay, hey y'all, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to jump off, okay?
Okay, all right. Sharon and Ron, I mean, I will send you all that, that, those applications, so you can get on, but we never got that letter that we were supposed to get.
Yeah.
No, no, no. Didn't get it. Nothing from MNC PPC, and for them to say, for, what'd they say, fourteen? What? Said they met with the community fourteen times?
That's what they, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I think we, we need to work on a, um, a list of things and, and go to the fire department, go to emergency preparedness, to D-PY, and say, these are our concerns that relate to your area, and, and see what we get back, and put that on the record for, for this hearing, okay? Make it part of the record. That's what we need to do. We need to get things documented, or what our concerns are, what we've done to answer our concerns, and put that on the record, and, and say, here, these are the things that we have got answers back that are not satisfactory. These are the concerns that we have no answer back, but we want, we're still concerned about. Get them on the record.
Okay.
Hearing, okay? And that, so, so that needs to, that needs to be scrubbed in, into them like three days before the hearing. Or there's some deadline before the hearing, so they can process it and get it on the record.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, um, we'll work on it.
Yeah.
Ron, can we, can we send it to you, or can we set up and talk about it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, what you want to put, get on the record, and we'll try and organize it, and, you know, have like a, a table of contents or something like that, say, you know, attachment one, attachment two, for, for these, like a, a basic summary of the thing, and then refer to attachments.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Appreciate you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Appreciate you, and you know, and Christine, I, you know, I, it's the first time I've actually interacted with her, and I'm glad she is who she is. She's apparently very, uh, you know.
Passionate about what she does, right? Yes, she is. And thorough. She seems to be thorough. Yep. So at least that's in the right hands.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yep, yep. All right.
Bye, Ron.
Bye bye. Bye.